First up is our political nature.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, we have approval of our agenda. If I can have a motion to approve the agenda. Luther from March, a second please. Support from Dawn, all in favor say aye. First up is our board recognition.
So we are extremely excited to recognize our, I don't want to say too much, our undefeated Division One softball team. I'm going to turn over to Mr. Glass to say a few words. I'll turn over to Coach and recognize the ladies that are able to hear.
Yeah, so it's exciting, obviously, to win a state championship in anything, but to go undefeated is quite an accomplishment. This team is the only team to ever win forty-two games and go undefeated and win a state championship in State Michigan, so it's pretty awesome. Tom Brigitte, our coach, those that don't know, he's already in the Hall of Fame, but this season put him at one thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight wins. One thousand one hundred and ninety-eight. Sorry, getting ahead of myself. We'll probably get there someday. No, but I just want to thank the girls that are here. I know you guys have other things going on, and some of you, college, different things. Why don't you cut your time short at the wake party today, so. But no, it was an unbelievable season, and I think, Tom, you know, in conversations we've had, one of the most special things about this team was how many different people stepped up in different situations. Two of our pitchers both pitched, one was eighteen and oh, I think the other one was nineteen and oh. So the split between having two really good pitchers, but key things that happened, just again, like, three home runs in a game, one in extra innings to win it, a freshman hitting a triple to lead off the seventh inning to get us to a position where we had a girl come off the bench who hadn't played much at all the entire season, laid down a suicide squeeze to get us that run, to tie it up, to be able to have a chance to win it. So I'm going to have Tom come up, just kind of introduce the girls, but the ones that are here, there are a bunch that aren't here, but thank you for taking time out of your summer to be here to do this.
Yeah, this was a pretty special season. I mean, I just finished, this was season forty-three for me. I've been doing this quite a while. It's still a lot of fun, that's why I keep hanging around as long as they'll let me. But this team this season was tremendous, right from the beginning of the season. We got a couple of girls that played on the team two years ago that made it to the semifinals and got beat at Michigan State two to one, and since that day, they had it on their mind and in their eye to get back there and win it all. And from the beginning of our season this year, you could see it on their faces that this was going to happen this year. Now, we thought we had a good chance, we had a good team, but to go forty-two and oh was probably the most remarkable thing. But along with being forty-two and oh and state champs, we OK red champ two years in a row, and one of the things that I'm the most proud of with this team is this is two years in a row, they have been the top academic team in the state. We put that on the shirts, too. I thought that was pretty important to have on there. And that's also, we're getting a big banner made to put on the back of the press box, alluding to those two academic achievements, along with our state championship signs that will hang back there. But tremendous season, great girls, great families, it's been nothing but fun, and yeah, we're going to try running back next year. We want to position the state to get them to be able to come back, but we've got that shot down.
By spring's end.
Yeah, well. So anyway, they're, like Mr. Glass says, they are busy this time of year getting ready to head off to college, a lot of them, and girls working and doing other things, so this is, out of our twenty girls that were on the team this year, one of them, we just called on the phone, and she said, "Oh, I completely forgot." She was planning on it, but that happens.
Well, I will tell you, it was very fun to celebrate and to watch the girls play. We know that when somebody wins a state title in the spring, it's hard because there's a lot going on with open houses and getting people here right after the win, and it's equally as hard to get them back in the fall because some of you are coming back here in another two weeks, but some of you are not going to be back here in another two weeks. So thanks for being here tonight, and you have almost enough to complete at least a team play softball. With this talented team, you could probably play with seven and still win.
Well, four of the girls that are here are seniors, so they'll be leaving us, and then the other three will be back next year.
Can we go up and?
Yep.
Good. Mike Deener. Congrats. Morgan Howell. Congratulations. Autumn Dennis. We do great. Lauren Berghorst. Laura Lucci. It's Esther Hubbleauer. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. We've got a little empty. All right, next up, we have recognition of visitors and hearing a call of present, and we do not have anyone who signed up to make public comment tonight. So we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have the proposal for the consent agenda items. We have a motion to approve. Motion from Andrew, second. Second from Greg, any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, proposing sign. Next up, we have human resource items. Ms. Anne Armstrong.
Yes, hello, and welcome to another eventful hiring month. As you can see, my paper showed up tonight. But no, our group of hires tonight is plentiful, but Lily showed up to be recognized, which is great. But hopefully, you all will be at the dinner next week, Wednesday, so you can meet all these great, amazing hires. But let me recommend who we have. First, we have Lily Kemp Histy. No, say it.
Kemp Histy.
Kemp Histy, there we go. So we were lying there, didn't I just handle? So Lily comes to us as a Ferris State grad. She did some subbing in Baldwin Middle School this past spring. She also was a Caledonia student when I think Mr. Crete was a teacher there.
My doctor of biology.
There you go, that's awesome. And so we're very excited.
She's an English teacher. And a biologist.
No, no, that's a good thing to say, though. She is a science and English teacher. I have strong encouragement that she's going to take that MTC test done so that we can use her in many ways, but what we're going to use her right now and for the near future is as an ELA teacher at Baldwin Street Middle School. So we're very excited for her. Next, we have Sarah Arundale. She is being recommended for a health and PE at Riley Street Middle School. Sarah has taught at Excel Charter and Byron Center Charter. What we noticed in her interviews was just a great way of teaching health to seventh grade students. Next, Kate McRae. Kate McRae is a GDSU grad just recently. She is also going to be getting her master's in autistic spectrum disorder, and she becomes highly recommended from that program, but she's going to be a part-time resource teacher at South Elementary School, which is very exciting. Then we have Delaney Overman. Delaney is a fourth grade recommendation at Bauer Elementary. Delaney also is a Grand Valley grad, spent some time early on at Georgetown Elementary, fell in love with our district during that student placement, but then did middle school math in Greenwich Public, loved that as well. So she was like, you know, I like the older kids, and so we think fourth grade is going to be fantastic. And the best was, we called Delaney to tell her she got the job, and she was at Disney World. So it must truly be happiest, please, in earth for her at that point in time. Then we have Alina Monroe. Alina is coming to us as a Grand Valley grad from the east side of the state, grew up in the east side of the state, parent of educators, and her brother is going to be a freshman at Aquinas, and so I said that we're going to make converts to the west side of the state, her whole family, by the time the year is over. Then we have Michelle Walden. Michelle is, and it's going to be flame again, right?
It is going to be.
So just know, she just got married, which is very exciting, but we still know her as Walden, but that's very exciting for her. She is coming to us from Mississippi. She has about twelve, fourteen years' experience as a teacher in Mississippi, and she has been testing like crazy because of the transfer between a Mississippi certificate to a Michigan certificate, and we're so impressed because she's already taken ASD and ECSE, so very impressive. Those aren't easy tests, and she's just like, yep, I'm just trying to get everything done, and she's being married at the same time. So we're very excited to have Michelle. Jenna Calvery, Calverly, did I say that right? I should know Jenna's name because she is a current employee of ours as an ECC para. She graduated from Grand Valley in like twenty-twelve, and received a teaching degree, took some time out to raise her kids. I think was a parent, helped her at Allard for a while, got a para position at ECC, and now to be a high school science teacher. So we're very excited. She was over the moon when we talked to her. It was like one of those calls that was just so fun. Then we have Jessica Searle. Jessica is coming to us from East Kentwood School District. She has been a CI categorical teacher for twelve years in Kentwood and is going to be at the five-six building in our CI program. She has tremendous knowledge, and we're really excited. We think her and Jeanne are going to be a dynamic team. And then finally, we have Alex Sakoff, and Alex called me today, and he's like, "I'm driving a U-Haul truck right now to move." He's coming from Royal Oak Middle School, and he has got four years there as an English teacher. He's looking forward to coaching. He was very excited about our PLCs because Royal Oak is involved in that process, too. So we think it's going to be a fantastic fit at Riley. So those are my recommendations for hires.
All right, so you have the proposal for the human resources items as presented by Anne Armstrong. We have a motion to approve. Motion from Andrew, second. Support. And Dawn, any questions for Anne?
Just a quick clarification. Did you say Lily is ELA or English?
That, well, middle school, we call it ELA.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, English Language Arts. And I do have a correction, though, on your sheet. It does say Riley, but it's Baldwin, and Alex is Riley.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye, proposing sign. All right, welcome, ladies and gentlemen.
It might be appropriate for a speech, but no.
All right, next up, Dr. Vanderjeff.
Yeah, just a real quick update. Thanks to our administrative team. We've had three busy days of our retreat in this room, learning a lot of content, and last year, they've been just so focused and dedicated to getting our kids in, knowing there's a lot of moving parts. There's a lot of moving parts, there's a lot going on. They're trying to get their buildings ready to go, but they're also here engaging professional learning and doing that work together as a team, so I just want to appreciate all of that. I'm looking forward to a very productive, amazing school year. We know how busy it gets, but I just appreciate their time and efforts. Thanks to Mrs. Armstrong and the work of hiring new staff. I know she's not quite done, but getting closer, getting very close. The kids will be here in under two weeks, so we're looking forward to that opportunity to have the kids here. The staff start on the nineteenth, with professional development, our Welcome Back in the Morning on the nineteenth. The board is invited to attend the Welcome Back on the nineteenth in the morning. We talked about it before. John Gordon will be here to spend about an hour with our staff, the presentation. We're looking forward to that opportunity. So if you'd like to join us, starting at eight o'clock, you'll go on about eight-thirty, about an hour, including. And then, as Mrs. Armstrong alluded to, next week, Wednesday, all our new teachers will be in professional development on Tuesday and Wednesday. On Wednesday evening, it's dinner at the North Campus Cafeteria, starting at five-thirty. Hopefully, you're able to join us so you get a chance to meet all of our wonderful staff. That's it, that's all.
Any questions for Dr. Vanderjeff? All right, next up, we have superintendent evaluation, raider reliability training, and I'm happy to welcome Mr. Mark DeBois from the Michigan Association of School Boards, who'll be conducting the training for us. This is going to be our final agenda item. Guests and administrators, you are welcome to leave if you would like to do so. You may stay. It's totally up to you. We are going to take just a quick break because we're going to rearrange the tables, so it's a little bit more conducive for our training. Many hands make life work.
That was amazing how fast it was.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just so you know, our central office team has been here all week, so I'd say they don't need to stay.
They'll be there pretty easily. Go, it's been a long weekend.
I could tell they wanted to stay.
No, they didn't.
Yeah, they're playing there.
Does it matter?
Gap today? Do you like them?
Yeah.
How long has it been?
The question is, does your wife like them?
She does. First time I ask, do you like them? Actually, she had to come help me pick them up.
Oh, I always bring samples.
Don't, yeah, don't ever pick them up.
Look at your trick.
So I can say a few words, Dr. Hooper, at the beginning.
Absolutely.
Mark, thanks for being here tonight. I appreciate it. I know the weather's pretty crummy outside anyway, so. So we have talked about this process and the training requirement. We did receive some notification that the training may not be required for us this year, this morning, actually, we heard that. But talking to President Hooper, you know, it's already scheduled. It's good to be here. It's good to go through this regardless at some point. So we will be going through this again at some point, whether it's next year or than three years, because the process is yet to be through seventy-three years from now. So we'll start tonight. I'll turn it over to Mark. He said he will be done within three to four hours. Is that what I understood?
Divided by four?
So we are not going to hold you to any timeline other than.
Probably by more than that.
We'll let you go. I know I have your presentation in here, at least.
Well, by way of introductions, I'm Mark Dovias, retired superintendent. My last position was superintendent of the Allerton Area Educational Service Agency, and I was also superintendent in Fayetteville. Retired in two thousand sixteen after living nine years, and education was a wonderful career and continues to be. So I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to meet the boards and kind of hear what's going on and keep my hands on things a little bit, if that's as much as is possible. I also do a little human resources work on the side, work a little bit at Hope College as well, and I want to thank you as board members and staff for the work that you do because I truly believe that there is no more important work than public education, and I think it's what absolutely keeps the American dream alive, and good people like you stepping up, filling a role, making difficult decisions, having information that you can't share with anybody else that puts you in a tight spot with your friends and people in the community, and that kind of things at times, but you're doing the work that needs to be done, so thank you very much for doing that. So what I'm going to focus on tonight is really what the changes in the law are. There's a lot of information in this I could go through. I could talk about the research behind the tool again. I could talk about the calendar, and I could talk about the process, but the process really hasn't changed very much. The dates on the calendar haven't changed at all, that I'm aware of. So with your permission, I'm going to kind of set that to the side. I'm going to skip a lot of preliminary stuff, and I'm really going to tell you what you need to know to meet the criteria under the law, if that's okay. So we will be moving through this, and I think that one of the things that's really important to remember in this, and you know this, this is a developmental process. It's, you get to the evaluation time, whatever it is, and the superintendent should know exactly where he stands by that time anyway, because you can get healthy, robust, honest conversations throughout the course of the year, so when you get to the evaluation, you know, it really, it really should be kind of a no-brainer to people. And importantly, I think it leads the superintendent's work to district goals. I'm not going to go through these learning, all these learning targets today, but we're going to spend a lot of time on that first bullet, and we're going to give you some practice using the instrument in the form of a raider reliability exercise. Again, it won't take very, very long, but you'll get a sense of how it works, and you probably already do. I understand that there were some concerns expressed to the legislature by different employee groups that were being evaluated that felt that people weren't trained in exactly how to use the instruments well, and that was kind of the reason that the law was changed. So really important to know that the board is a whole evaluates superintendent, okay? The board is a whole, employs one person, and that person, of course, is a superintendent, and it's a requirement that you use a research-based tool, which of course the MASB instrument is, and that you report the results in the Register of Educational Personnel, and you're required to have training on raider reliability. So the law now, you have to evaluate superintendent annually with certain exceptions. We'll talk about those in a little bit. Now, a major change is there are three categories, three rating categories instead of four. If you remember, there used to be ineffective, minimally effective, effective, and highly effective. Now, there are three categories that you can read there, effective, developing, or needing support. Okay, so there's only three categories now. You are required to hold a mid-year privacy report meeting, review with the superintendent, and there's some things that you must discuss there that we'll talk about. Major change in the composition of the evaluation. If you remember, the evaluation instrument itself used to be fifty percent, okay, of the total superintendent evaluation determination. Now it's sixty-five. Student growth used to be forty percent, and I think they started this as twenty-five percent, then it went to forty, and now it's at twenty percent. Progress towards district goals used to be ten percent, now they're fifteen percent, so the change in the composition is pretty significant. Those goals, of course, are defined by your strategic plan and really are, should be determined by the superintendent and the Board of Education, so it doesn't say that you have to evaluate your superintendent's performance on every one of the goals that might be in your strategic plan. You could focus his work in the evaluation of performance goals on a couple of those areas if that was appropriate. It's up to you to decide. Student growth, you have to include multiple rating categories, and you can use state assessment data now, but you don't have to use state assessment data. Student learning objectives are something that's new, and it talks about that in that last folder. You could have a group of fifth grade teachers that got together and said, "This is one of the things we want in our, you know, to be evaluating on, is, you know, are students showing progress on this particular skill or in this particular area?" You know, if they had benchmark data to begin with, you know, they had a good research. Uh, you know, if they had benchmark data to begin with, um, you know, they had a, they had a good research base for, for doing this and a good reason for it, and they were gonna be able to get data at the end to determine that progress. They could go to their principal, who would then take that information to, you know, the, uh, superintendent or the assistant superintendent for instruction, and that could be a part of the plan. We've been doing something similar like that with special education, uh, students for a long time. The use of, um, what, what assessment data is gonna be used is decided locally now. Okay, you get to make the decision as a Board of Education or as, as a district of, of what data is gonna be incorporated into that student growth component. Uh, you know, but now, you know, student growth measures progress over from one point in time to another point in time of a cohort group, like fourth graders to fifth graders is why it shows. Proficiency is more of a shot, snapshot, tie, all students are doing. Um, so getting back to student learning objectives, you know, you gotta be measurable, you know, long-term, in the course of the year, like week. Um, and the teacher or a teacher team would set them for, you know, all the kids in the class. All the kids in the fifth grade, all the kids in the building. Mid-year progress report. Okay, this is something that is new. So, um, super, mid-year progress report needs to be done every year that your superintendent is evaluating. So if you're not evaluating superintendent during the year, you do not need to do a mid-year progress report. The mid-year progress report simply has, um, a couple of components. One is, it's, it's that, it's a progress update on the goals superintendent has. Okay, so superintendent has two or three goals. We don't recommend more than two or three goals. Um, that it would be a report given on those. Um, the second part of it is, is determining what the goals will be going forward for the remainder of the year. The goals going forward for the remainder of the year do not need to change. They could be the same goal, same goals. So, one of the things I passed out to you is a, um, progress report form that you could use, but you don't have to use. You could create your own, but this doesn't need requirement. So on the first page, you simply list out the goals from, that the superintendent's been working on this year. Could be three goals, could be two, could be one, could be five, could be whatever you determine. We think, we think less is more. And then simply a statement about the progress on the goals. Okay? I should mention, you can go into closed session to do this. And you can go into closed session anytime you want to talk about superintendent's progress on the goals. Okay? Then, they get signed off on by the board president and superintendent. And then on the flip side, you articulate, uh, the goals to be used for the remainder of the year. Okay, so all the goals moving forward. For the same goals, you just copy them over on that page. Uh, and this is a good place to, uh, you know, articulate what kind of evidence, if evidence is gonna be required to support the progress that's being made, whether the goals are obtained in that. And another very important piece there is that additional training if it's needed. You know, if you're expecting your superintendent to do something that he really doesn't have the full expertise that he needs at that point, you know, how, how are you gonna make sure he gets that expertise? Okay, you know, um, what kind of trainings or workshops might be appropriate? And again, this is done, uh, not to your superintendent, but with your superintendent, right? Uh, he's likely gonna recommend what those goals are. He's likely gonna articulate the evidence that he's gonna be able to share, and he's likely gonna be able to point out the trainings and the help that he needs in that regard. Okay, again, signed off on. Any questions on that?
I got a quick question, Mark.
Yep.
Um, on slide eight, you talked about goals, you know, fifteen percent of the tool is based on progress towards goals. You mentioned that those goals were based on superintendent's goals and the goals from the strategic plan. This tool is only the superintendent's goals, though?
Okay, yeah, this, this tool is superintendent's goals.
Okay.
And that fifteen percent, I don't wanna say, um, should be the strategic plan goals and this.
Okay.
Okay, it should be, you know, it's, those goals should be tailored around the strategic plan as a part of it.
Got it. Okay.
Okay?
That makes sense.
I would think.
Yep.
So, do you think anyone added that or...
No, that's, I mean, you, you saw it, but I would have did a full review this summer. It was, uh, somewhere based on strategic plan, but it was in our category of the district.
Yes?
Mark, on slide number nine, when should these multiple rating categories be determined? Uh, so, let's say we're not gonna evaluate Dr. Nanjek this year, and it gets to the point that we need to evaluate him. Do we develop, do we look at these multiple rating categories then in January, and we decide what we're gonna rate him on?
So typically, there's gonna be alignment between those categories and what your teachers and such are rating on. I think it's really important that you know that at the start of the cycle, of the evaluation cycle.
Yes, we have traditionally used the teacher metrics or evaluation, which is the same as our administrator metrics or evaluation measurement would, uh, same would be fine. That makes sense. Yeah, so that's the challenge, because my evaluation is on a calendar year, and the teachers are on a school year. So traditionally, we don't know the metrics for my evaluation until the second half of my evaluation. I'm not gonna say it's out of my control, but it's, it really follows the same system. So if the teacher's changes from one year to the next, mine would too, but it'd be six months behind me.
Or, or you would look at, like, if the teachers established their goals this year in August, September, you could potentially use those in January, where instead of, you would lag a little bit, 'cause then you'd have data.
We could. The challenge of lagging is we're looking at, then the years, the data is a year old. So the teacher's data statistically is used from the previous school year, 'cause they don't have any data. So technically, it falls, the teacher's measurement actually falls closer to mine with my evaluation cycle than their own. And that's a flaw in the teacher's evaluation system, but that's for another discussion.
And you get a lot of that data, what fall year now from the previous year?
And that's correct. And so for, for me at least, my evaluation being based, the teacher's evaluation is based on the previous year. But for me, it would be based on my current calendar year, so it still falls in line with mine. I think if we did it the earlier one, to your point, that would be part of the regular, if that makes sense. But we could definitely talk about that.
I think it's good to have a conversation about that, that being in the cycle, in the evaluation cycle. Uh, and if goals are not being met, and, you know, you're not happy with progress towards the goals and that sort of thing, improvement plan, then certainly more into that point in time, um, you know, put in something maybe a little more fun about what the goals and progress and what's expected, that sort of thing. Rate of reliability training, um, so we'll get into that in a little bit. But that's saying by September one this year and every three years, okay, that you have to, like, go, oh, rate of reliability training. And I suspect three years out, this is probably gonna change, and, you know, they're gonna see if there's some bugs in the evaluation system and that sort of thing that they can revise, or, or maybe the legislature will try to help us again and advise it on, you know, the science of progress. So, Mark, you're saying that, and that's what we're doing right now, rate of reliability training, right?
Yeah, that's, that's an exercise that's coming up here in just a little bit.
Okay, so, is, is that what they decided this morning that we didn't have to have? So, I'm gonna let you speak to that, because you're the one who heard it.
So this morning, my legal training, I didn't know, I know Dr. Hooper signed up for it, but it's recorded, so she'll get a copy of it. I didn't see anybody else that was attending.
That was the one a couple days ago?
No, it was this morning.
Oh, this morning, okay.
This morning, it was a four-hour, welcome back to school, legal update provided by MASD. And the very first thing they covered, I was, I was texting Dr. Hooper at probably nine o'clock this morning, it started eight-thirty. First thing, I was, I was sitting there and I was paying attention, but I was doing some other things, and I kept listening, and then it caught, and he said it multiple times, that if you are not in a formal evaluation for your superintendent in the current year, you, the way he reads it, and I think that's exactly what he said, the way I read it, you do not have to go through this then until next year. 'Cause there are, and then he mentioned, some districts will have a turnover in board members. Um, you don't know what's happening to superintendent positions, all of those things. So the clock starts ticking once you go through, based on the every three years, so you wait till next year. So we chatted this morning via text and said, basically, let's, let's just, we already have a plan. We're planning to be here, let's, uh, let's have that, uh, training take place tonight. So yes, that's what we're referring to.
Good. Um, so, as far as the training requirements, you get, we have to have training in rate of reliability. We're actually just gonna go through, like, three areas of the rubric and, and look at that, and I'll give you some criteria, and you can tell me how you would rate that individual superintendent. Um, also, discussion about, you know, what the expectations are that evaluators should work for when assessing. Um, so training on the evaluation process itself, and calibration exercise is really what we're gonna get into in a little bit. And then talk about, um, ongoing support for evaluators. So like, if you do another training down the road after you've gone through and used this instrument, uh, you identify some things that you're struggling with, um, you know, that would be a good time to, uh, let your trainer know before they come in and say, you know, "We need some more help in this area," and that kind of thing. And maybe some clarity. Am I going too fast or am I doing okay? All right. Um, a new change in the law is a superintendent can be designated as unevaluated. If they're uneval, they could be unevaluated because, uh, one, they didn't work in the district for sixty days during that, sixty days that year. Uh, two, there's now a thing called an appeal process. So if you make a change to, any change to your superintendent's evaluation moving forward, a raise, an extra personal day, anything, you have to put, uh, a clause in there or language in there about how your superintendent can appeal the results of the evaluation. Okay, um, so that, that's a new thing. So if the superintendent, uh, is not happy with the evaluation, they have a, a right to appeal the outcome of it. And if the, the body that listens to the appeal decides that those concerns are valid, you throw the evaluation out, superintendent could be designated as unevaluated that year. Another reason would be extenuating circumstances, and as I, as I think about these, I go, like, to the extreme. There's so, something in the district has happened that just requires all your superintendent's time and attention, and they can't get to anything else, you know, um, a school shooting or something like that. Um, and, uh, you know, fire that destroys buildings and, you know, some, something along that area. And I, and I don't know what else, but if, if it was a situation that superintendent was just simply not being able to attend to those elements in, that are outlined in the evaluation instrument, it could be considered unevaluated. If the superintendent is unevaluated, uh, the rating from the previous year carries over. Okay, um, as long as the superintendent is in the same position as they were previous year. Um, if your superintendent is currently rated highly effective for three years in a row, you have a right, you can skip the evaluation this year. You can go every year. Okay, moving forward, if the superintendent is evaluated defective three years in a row, you can skip a year. And again, remember, if you skip that year, you do not have to do the mid-year progress report. So the rating that would go into the state in the Registry of Educational Personnel would be the rating from the previous year. If the superintendent is reading, rated as developing or needing support, uh, you must put an improvement plan in place. And part of that improvement plan has to include training opportunities to help that superintendent work on the skills, bring them up to where they need to be. Questions? Um, this talks about having that language review process in there. And of course, you know, you'd have to comply with Open Beans Act and the Information Act and that sort of thing. The research base is, you've got this link on your website that takes care of all the research-based requirements that you need. We're gonna skip over this, because you've been this, through this before, this is a research-based, uh, review that goes into, uh, it was used to determine evaluation instrument. And so, understanding the instrument, uh, the categories have not changed. You still have the five performance categories, okay, so that's nothing that's new. Uh, it's still based on rubrics, which are, uh, select, you know, a set of criteria, descriptors, if you will, for certain behaviors or actions. Uh, when I was a superintendent during my sixteen years, we didn't have this. My evaluation usually consisted of me going into executive session of Board of Education. They'd be telling me all the good things I was doing, and, uh, then they would write it in one-page summary. And never, ever did they tell me I needed to do something different or better or anything like that. Um, and I was a, I was a decent superintendent. I was a good superintendent sometimes. I was a great superintendent sometimes. And there were some times where, you know, I could've used a little more direction. Um, so, I think one of the great things about this instrument is, you know, that, that rubric styling gives you those words. Gives you this, this, my Boards of Education did not have it. They never had any training on how to evaluate superintendent. Okay, so none of that was their fault. Um, but it's really great. I think they already had this. I would, and I would have enjoyed being evaluated on this. Says a guy that's retired. Um, so, things that are in red in the evaluation instrument are required by law. All right, so now you see there's only three columns as were, as were these before. Uh, there's still performance categories, um, there's still performance indicators. Um, you know, these numbers here speak to the stuff I skipped over and the research that goes in, has gone in. The research base, we had to use some of those on there. Um, on the previous evaluation instrument, there was, there were, um, several areas on there in the, uh, in the standards and such that were in red. They had to be done by law. Okay, you had to get community feedback. You had to get staff feedback. You had to get student feedback. You had to work on student attendance. You know, those, those were all things the superintendent had to be evaluated on. Those things have all gone by the wayside now. Okay, so, you know, while those are all important, they're not, they're not acquired part of the evaluation. I always found it interesting that in the business and finance area of the evaluation, there wasn't a single red category there that, that had to be, something that had to be evaluated on. Um, so, you've got the new evaluation instrument in front of you. And I'd like you to just take maybe, you know, four or five minutes and just look through it. Um, it's, it's interesting also to do it side by side. There, there's some places where I think highly effective has just been wiped off. I think there's somewhere it's been combined with effective. But, and just kind of see what you think about, you know, the change in the format. You've, you've gone through this once. I'm always curious to hear what boards think about it.
Just a quick question maybe for the board also. Is there any new categories? I know there's not, the, the domains haven't changed, but are there, you know, there's E one through, uh, nine. That was the same before. There's nothing new.
It's a good question. I don't, I don't really know.
I think that's the same. We don't have, I, I was gonna be old enough for that, go through it. But, um, uh, from what I understand, that the number of categories that I'm evaluated on has not changed. The number and the titles in each category haven't changed. The rubric is what has changed.
That's correct.
So some of them, to your point, the highly effective is just gone.
Mm-hmm.
Other ones, because of the bar for highly effective, it was combined with effective. I don't believe needing support and developing have changed at all.
I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't think they have. So I, I mean, I can go through the document. I don't, I don't think they have. So I, I mean, I can go through the document and later date, but um, I just, as you go through, if you're looking for something and oh, that wasn't there before, I think all the categories were there before. It's just the effective category is probably something I would, to Mark's point, maybe focus on a little bit as you're.
That's a good point. Yeah, thank you.
Quick question on B, again, this is going back to goals. If B two, I agree seeks community parent, community slash parent input engages community slash parents in goal setting. I just wanna make sure we're clear on goal setting, um, as it relates to the strategic plan versus the plan or the goals that.
Yes, they'd be, they'd be goals for the district, not the superintendent.
Okay. So do you need more towards your strategic plan to goal better?
Yep.
Perfect. So getting feedback from the community in order to set the strategic plan, Alex.
E four I C I, M I C I P.
So MYCIP is the new continuous improvement plan for the district.
If you think about district school improvement, um, the MYCIP is what we work on from a, from a building and district school improvement. So you can almost take off the word MYCIP and put school improvement and that would be a board like, if that makes sense. For us, we know MYCIP, but that's not a role.
Yep.
Mark, who, who drove these changes?
The, the changes were driven by the legislature. Clarify your question, just, what do you mean, uh, I'm sorry, interrupt. Do you mean the, the language changes or the need for change?
The need for change.
As a legislative position.
Okay, so it's all political. And I, and I, when I say political, I don't, I'm not using that in any nefarious way, I'm just saying legislative, political.
There was a, there was a major push to address the teacher evaluation system.
Uh-huh.
Based on the, how teachers were evaluated and the categories in which they were evaluated. Which included the academic progress, which is the um, that twenty, forty percent, about fifteen, ten, I mean, all that was part of it. And then to streamline it from four to three categories.
And that's where you.
And then when it happened with teachers.
Okay.
It led towards administrators, which led towards superintendent. So that superintendents didn't have four and teachers had three. And, and teachers are on the same thing, though the difference with teachers, if they're rated effective, which was highly effective, they go on, they can go on a three-year cycle before they get evaluated as opposed to everyone.
So that answers my question, they were really looking at the superintendents per se and saying, we need to change this to.
No, we were the afterthought.
Exactly, okay, that, that makes sense to me, cause this doesn't seem like, why would they do this?
They, in fact, when this all came out, when the changes, we kept asking, what about superintendents, we didn't even think about that.
Okay.
So then they had to come back and say, I guess we do need to.
Okay, so that was an afterthought, okay. You know, the, the idea behind the group on having such a high number, high percentage of forty percent. I mean, I think it was, the idea was good, I mean, if you could get down to one teacher in one classroom um, and eliminate all the other factors like who the teacher was a year before. And you know, like student attendance and all sorts of things. But that's, that's never really happened and couldn't be measured, really couldn't be measured effectively. Um, and I uh, was facilitating a strategic plan development a couple of years ago. And I uh, looked at the data in the district for um, their effectiveness ratings for the teachers and the administrators in the district. Um, and the effective, you know, they were, you know, like in the high nineties or something like that percent. And so I have a look at the statewide data, and you probably know this, but the statewide data, uh, sort of, so I was a quiz. What was the, take a stab at what the effectiveness rating in the state was strategic? Being either effective or highly effective, oh, percent, not either effective or highly effective. Spot on. Administrators? What do you think?
Right.
Yeah. So, you know, I think personally, our teachers are superbly trained now compared to what it was when I came out of school. Oh my gosh, our principals know so much more than they ever did, they're so much more superbly trained. Our superintendents are so much better trained than ever before. Ninety-nine percent? You know, I'm not so sure about that, so. Um, so after each performance category rubric, there is a place for the board to make comments. And this is typically, this should be a chance for the superintendent to make a comment on there if he wants. And typically, it would be for the board president only to make a comment on there. Okay, again, catching, capturing the consensus of the room. If there were, you know, comments or there was a feeling in the room that should be captured there. Not saying you have to write anything there, but it goes back to that one voice thing, okay? Uh, I work with a district where every board member writes a comment on every one of these areas. And that poor superintendent, he doesn't know what to listen to, who to listen to. And they've really gone to the situation where that, that guy's got seven different bosses instead of one blog boss, which is the whole board.
Okay, so I was trying to process that while you were saying that. So what you were saying then is that it's the role of the board president to gather some consensus about what comments need to be made and that's the only comment that's listed there, is as far as what's sort of the consensus of.
Yes, that's, you know, that's the forward way of doing it for sure.
But does that mean if we're in closed session, we can't like?
Give a comment to the superintendent?
Yeah, of course, yeah, but well, cause let's start with two of those, we agree with those comments.
Yeah, because this is going into personnel file.
Yep.
Okay, so.
Yep, makes sense.
Alright, not gonna say anything really about evidence because that hasn't changed. It's just that, um, you know, we believe strongly in a minimalistic approach to evidence. I worked with, I facilitated evaluations in two districts where in one district, the superintendent emailed out six hundred and some pages of evidence. And in another district, uh, the superintendent passed out a bible at the beginning, not an actual bible, but about three hundred pages of evidence that he didn't put together, his poor administrative system spent all her time putting it together. You know, and bottom line was, nobody read anything. Uh, when she told me she was emailing all that out, uh, I just kinda tried to discourage it, she's, well, I'm gonna do it anyway. I said, well, you can send it to me, but I'm not gonna read it, you know, because your board, your board members aren't gonna read it either. Um, so, this is the calibration exercise. Okay, so, if you would, go to performance category A, governance and board relations. And we are looking at A one, possible policy development. And again, the policy development, you see the, the standards that were used in developing that. Um, and here is what you, I'm gonna read to you what you either see evidence of, um, or are present evidence of, or you know to be true about your superintendent. Now, I'm not talking about your superintendent, I'm talking about this hypothetical superintendent, okay? And I'm gonna ask you to tell me what rating you would give. So evidence provided includes what, policy involvement is the category. Uh, evidence provided includes attendance at policy committee meetings. He is proactive, he or she is proactive regarding certain new issues that need to be developed in the policy. He or she holds meetings for adjusted and new policies due to law changes. Uh, the policy approv, approval process is thorough and timely. He or she reviews some new and adjusted policies with board and administration, so once they're developed, he reviews them. And he disseminates the policies effectively to all staff people. Okay, all staff in the district. So, look at the descriptors for um, policy involvement. And then tell me what rating you would give. Okay, we have one, three.
Two, developing.
Developing, okay. Two. Three. Is that a three? Two? What's, what's missing from making this a three?
It says development, is actively evolved from the development? That's all the word development for me. I look at this, they certainly administer them, they're present, but I don't.
Well, proactive regarding certain new issues to develop in the policies.
So that would be okay to, to qualify for the development?
Yeah. In my, M A S P would tell you this is a three.
I, I, I mean, that's what I would say, just, and, and I understand what Mark's saying about development there. But um, I think um, looks like a three to Ken, where, where would you say the distinction was in your mind?
Uh, that I did read the second level, there are certain issues. I, I believe in a superintendent that is aware of, cognizant of and proactive around basically the whole, I mean, a lot of things. Now, there are certainly issues that may pop up, but has the word of all to understand, here she has a word of all to understand, wow, is this legislative change in the director's. So it's a combination of, I took certain, maybe I'm wrong, um, that's fine. I took certain to be perhaps a little more specific.
Okay.
And not, and I didn't, I didn't see the, the level of proactiveness in here that um.
Okay.
Quite frankly, I think we're used to here.
Yeah, well, that's good. Um, I think, you know, I think that raises a good point too, is that sometimes in the evaluation process, there may be a word or two that, that isn't met or something along the way. But if you're overall really happy with what's going on, um, you know, I think, I think that, that, that means a lot. Okay, that was the first one. Budget reporting, so this is D, I believe.
Mark, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Going back to that other one. And, and um, you know, you, one of the things that you said is you didn't, you didn't think it was necessarily a good use of time to get, to print three hundred pages out and stuff, okay? I think that goes back to what you just said a couple of seconds ago about, what do we know about what's going on within our district, okay? I'm not necessarily looking at, I mean, I, I, I'd like to see all the things that the superintendent thinks contributed to this. But also in my mind, I know the things that are going on and I'm impressed with, or not impressed with and things like that. And I think that holds more weight for me. Now, there may be some things that he gives to me that I didn't know that were going on and I say to myself, okay, you know, I need to make myself better aware.
I think what you observe is so important.
Right.
And it's gonna be a, a higher, a high part of the evaluation, significant, significant part. Um, you know, we're gonna talk about budget here for a second and then before I put that slide up there, an example of this would be, um, you know, like those people that were submitting so much evidence. Um, you know, they, in one district, they, um, she provided, the district, the administration provided to the board budget actual and cash flow reports and that kind of thing at every board meeting. Well, well, why copy those in the evidence when, when you're giving them on a regular basis? You know, it's just, it's, it's not a good use of somebody's time, I don't think.
But just for clarification on evidence, I do feel that over the course of the year, there are things that I might upset you. You know, like I totally forgot, so we don't make copies and give to a binder, but we put it in a folder that you're like, you know what?
Yeah.
And you can go back and reference.
And I appreciate it, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Makes all sense.
Not wrong.
Yeah, I just, I mean, so when you talk about pages, I mean, we had well over three thousand pages for the documents. But we didn't print them and give you.
Another copy.
Yes, a copy that you can grab and see more.
Mm-hmm. Okay, D two, budget reports. Alright, this one will be a little easier, I think. So there's no regular budget reporting at the bu, at the board level. There's no budget before two meetings. Budget to actual reports are not regularly available. The audit has issues and management concerns. And this is my favorite one, um, when the board asks the superintendent about the finances, he's not sure of the status. Um, so how would you rate?
E support. This is D two, correct?
Yeah.
Yep.
Is there a less than one?
I hear that all the time. Okay, so now we're back to uh, this is C O D, evaluations. And this would be uh, staff input, so it would be the very first one. So uh, the superintendent sends out a perception survey, made to all staff. But the results are not consistently utilized, okay? Sometimes they're utilized, sometimes they're not. Okay, staff meetings are held on a regular basis. The curriculum review process includes staff members, but their ideas are utilized inconsistently again. What do you think?
This is C one?
Yep. Yes.
I'd say that all been.
I'd say two.
Two?
This is what I'd say, between two and three, because obviously, according to the rubric, the person in, if it was effective, actively sought staff input and engaged the staff, they just may not have incorporated their choices. So there's, those are some times, and I know we've struggled, struggled with that along the way, where it's like either words added or words not included give a different impression to each of us.
Absolutely, absolutely. So generally, we would consider that to be a two, but I really, it's certainly justified as it's okay to go a half score, you're gonna need to go two and a half. So that ends the re-reliability training and calibration exercise. Um, we are into the evaluation cycle, which has not changed at all. And so I'm gonna just flip through here. I think this is important, you know, a couple of things here. At the beginning evaluation cycle, um, you know, oh, one thing before I forget to mention this. Um, and I know this is not gonna be an issue here, but the law clearly says that board members need to be trained before they can evaluate the superintendent. And that is not always necessarily the case in district, what time the game start?
I know, that's not.
Uh, that's not, uh, that's not necessarily the case in every district. And um, if, I'm a superintendent and my evaluation is less than I think it should be. And uh, I was evaluated by a board member who even sat in the room and made comments to my evaluation. And I didn't like it, I would, I would appeal that and I think that would be grounds for winning it. Um, just by not having a board member with the training. So making sure these things are placed before, before the client, at the beginning of the client cycle. And we're gonna just go through this real quick, cause this again, has not changed. Um, again, use consensus file for your evaluation. This is what I wanna get to. Especially if you bring in new board members on. And if you're having, beginning of the evaluation cycles in January, I think it's, this, this is really sound to have these things on, on hand and to kind of, maybe review them with the whole board. Or maybe the board president, the superintendent meets with the new board members coming on and making sure they have this information, but, so they know what the planning calendar is in the ways of evaluation. They see a copy of the instrument and, you know, hey, you gotta get trained, and here's some dates. You can take the training online. So, then a copy of superintendent goals are available, and certainly the strategic plan. What the assessment model is that, that teachers are using in the district. Copy of superintendent's contract, any relevant board policies. And the job description, if you have one. Typically, districts don't use it. It's, it's in the old policy that's used. But, you know, having those at the beginning just kind of refocuses everybody. So, we are not gonna go through this. And, we're at the end.
You were magnificent. You know, I, I think that we did, we did go through all of those this last year. We had every one of those points that you had up there. There were a couple of us who were new on the board who hadn't gone through that training before. We went through the training in October, the online training. And so, I think we were pretty well prepared to be able to do that and go through the, the whole thing last year.
Good.
So, just for clarification on slide seventy-four, we still do the informal check-ins. Like there's an informal check-in in April, you still do the annual progress report.
Yes. But there's nothing, sentence domain has beyond those dates, of course.
Right, we just don't have to do the formal, this paperwork unless we're gonna evaluate them.
Yep.
Okay. But we still do the informal.
Yeah. I, well, you know, it's up to you, of course, but I think it's a good practice.
Yeah, we did it in June this year. I think it's a good idea. That's here, and that's what we're here to talk about.
I agree.
Where we are as a district involves.
I agree. Especially if something changes that we weren't prepared for. Definitely say, okay, now, we had, but now we know that this is.
And I just remembered something really important. And I'm glad I did. But that is, I need to circulate this among board members to ask you to check your information on here, make it sure it's correct, and then initial it. And that will also get you attendance at meeting and credit for M A S P.
Are there any questions? You did a nice job getting the highlights.
Thank you. I am here to serve, if I can ever be able to service through the district. I enjoy being out and working and doing other things and our paths will probably cross at some time. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Just in closing, I will say, thanks for coming to this. Thanks for being here. We did talk about, I know one of our board members is in here, but with an online person, but thinking through, the, the reader reliability is different when you're online, which is going through it, your perception of that. But I think the board does a nice job of having those conversations about how you read something or somebody else might, trying to navigate what that looks like to find consensus amongst the board. We witnessed that when, like James was with us last time.
All right, as we're looking on that, are we, or not? We should be to a roundtable. We'll start with team. We have anything other than fire up Go Legal.
Kids in.
Yes. I'm gonna skip Mr. Chancy for a moment.
I'm all set, thanks.
I'm all set too.
I'm a former high school softball coach, and that was intimidating.
I will tell you this, I know this is not part of the meeting, but, so in the quarterfinal game, they were playing Midland. And we were down three to, so Megan Beamer in the first run, right, hit a homerun, the D off the gate, went on to the fifth. Down three to, three to one, and then she hits a homerun at the eighth, so they get three to two. And then the whole bunt situation, test and help about, which was the last one. The whole squeeze bunt by a girl that has been four times all year. Gather in to score, go to extra innings, and then Megan Beamer hit another homerun in the, the, her second extra inning to eliminate.
She had three home runs?
She had three home runs. And she's had five all year, she had three at the end. And then they go into the semifinal game against Mercy, or against Mercy, who had not lost at all. They've, they've given up on average point nine runs per game, and we mercy, mercy. We've been down ten to nothing to five innings, and nobody expected that.
They got the dream line pitcher?
They do. She's just going out there, and we beat them ten to nothing. And then we play the finals, and we're down five to nothing. So, the last two games were, sorry, the quarterfinals were epic.
Mr. Chancy, anything for a roundtable?
Nope, I'm all set.
All right, well, I will take the motion to adjourn.
How was that?
Motion for Mark, second.
Support.
Second for Dawn. All in favor, say aye.
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 We need to adjourn.